Coos.
Here.
Gage.
Here.
Harris.
Right.
Isom. Kuyfert.
Here.
Seaverton.
Here.
Zingy.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone. Bring this down to communications, I think we got a new 5B2 laid on the table. And, um, 7A3. There are notes from Mitch. Alright, that brings us down to persons to be heard, we got a lot of people signed up so don't take forever please, so everybody can get their words in. KJ has decided to wait till his comments, I think it's our lull, I can't read it.
Cowie.
Okay, come on up and start us off sir.
Realize I'll be the first one here.
Welcome.
Sorry, I'm a little nervous here just. Just wanted to take a moment to urge the city council not to preemptively ban, uh, sales. Wanted to tell you a brief story, uh, some of you know me, some of you don't. My name is Richard and, uh, I'm a cancer survivor. At nineteen, I was diagnosed with cancer. I did roughly twelve months of heavy, uh, heavy duty chemo. Uh, couldn't eat, couldn't sleep. Anytime I was able to eat, I could not keep anything down and was in constant pain. That's when I was introduced to marijuana, uh, in a very illegal state. Like I said, this was ten years ago. It gave me some rest, it allowed me to sleep, it allowed me to eat, it allowed me to eat without vomiting, which was kinda nice. And I just, uh, wanna urge the city council not to take that away from, uh, from those who may need that. And that's all I really have to say.
Thank you sir. Um, one thing, um, Richard, and I think, um, you know, this was brought up again on the council thing, really not to make the decision to decide if we're going to be selling or not, I think that's decision's still gonna be made the first meeting in March. This was brought up by the attorney just so if anybody files for something in February before we discuss it, um, we still have input on it. But the final decision of, are we gonna do it or not will be that first meeting in March. Thank you for coming.
Put my note.
Jim.
Uh, good evening folks.
Welcome.
My name is Jim Bacon, I live at fourteen ten Tongis Avenue. And my comments specifically relate to your agenda item number nine under managers report, uh, relevant to, uh, the draft two thousand sixteen cruise ship schedule and birth assignments. Uh, I am the owner of a fishing vessel, The Wave Dancer, I keep moored in Thomas Basin. And I would like you to just keep in your mind during your discussions, the utility of the dock crane that is located, uh, in that area that's on the inside of the pier there. I just wanna let you know that it's been, it's a real useful item in my business when I'm swapping off gear. It's nice to have there and I hope that there is a way that it can stay in that area there. And that's the extent of my comments.
Thanks Jim.
Thank you.
Gail Jackson.
Um, my comments are about the marijuana legalization for buying and selling in the city of Ketchikan. And, uh, my comment is that, uh, the, um, buying and selling has been going on for a long time and it will continue to go on and I think the city would, uh, probably reap some good revenue if they allowed it to be taxed and become, uh, a part of that system.
Thank you very much Gail. Terrence.
Good evening, uh, my name is Terrence Robbins with the Ketchikan Wellness Coalition. I'd just like to speak quickly on two items on the agenda, tobacco and marijuana. The tobacco excise tax, um, I'd like to offer a comprehensive, um, study, a compilation of all the data I've been gathering over the next, uh, the last twelve months, thirteen months, on tobacco use and how it affects youth in Ketchikan and the health of the citizens of Ketchikan. So if you would like me to bring that to the next meeting, if you, if you put it on your agenda, I would love to, to share that information with you. If you request it.
If you could get copies too, Terrence, that'd be fine even if it's on or not on the meeting, if you can get his copies of the stuff.
Yes, I'd be happy to do that. A couple notes on tobacco. Tobacco excise tax can have immediate positive results to the youth smoking rates in a town as evidenced by Anchorage and Juneau. In two thousand nine, Juneau, um, uh, passed an excise tax, um, or adopted an excise tax and their, their, their youth smoking rates dropped by thirty-seven percent over the next two years, um, between two thousand nine and two thousand eleven. And then they're, they're slowly dropping through cessation efforts but at a much lower or smaller pace. In Anchorage during that same period of time between two thousand nine and two thousand eleven, youth smoking rates dropped only two point four percent. Then in two thousand eleven, Anchorage increased their tobacco tax, excise tax, which resulted in a decline of youth smoking in Anchorage School District over thirty-six percent over the next two years. So it has an immediate positive effect for our youth. So if you consider a tobacco tax, um, I think that you'll see some immediate results. Um, for marijuana, I just wanted to, um, to point out that youth access increases with retail availability. Colorado was fourteenth in the nation before medical marijuana was legalized in that state. After, um, once it was, once it was legalized, they climbed marijuana dispensaries, uh, medical dispensaries became prevalent in, uh, Colorado and by the way, there's more medical dispensaries in Colorado than there are in Denver than there are pharmacies, by almost two to one. They went up to fourth in the nation in youth, um, marijuana use. Now that it's legal recreationally and they have stores selling recreational marijuana in Colorado, this year they made it all the way to first in the nation in youth marijuana use. So if we, if we sell it in the stores, we can just guarantee that it's gonna, it's gonna affect our youth in that respect. And that's all I have.
Thanks Terrence.
You're welcome.
Tyler Van, I think it is. Tyler? Okay. Jean Stack.
My name is Jean Stack and I live at twenty-seven twenty-five Third Avenue. My husband's family has lived here in Ketchikan for generations. I want, and I've been in the retail business for thirty years. Um, I want to address the ship, the birth, I, I just want to say that I think the Port Authority does a very good job with trying to please everybody. Trying to get the ship so everybody has a fair amount of passengers. I think they do a very, very good job and I think it's probably a very hard job to try to please us, try to please the cruise lines, the whole business, I just wanted to make that. And then the fishermen person, I also have fishermen in my family. And I think it's really good that we can fish out of Ketchikan and make a living. That's all I have to say, thank you very much.
Thanks Jean. Bronson Olson.
Hi, Neil, my time.
Okay. Liz Martin.
Hello council members, Liz Martin here, six fifteen, Hickryway, Ketchikan, Alaska. How you doing?
Real good.
You know what I'm gonna talk about. Well, I'm gonna start off by telling you that, um, I'm gonna use Colorado as an example today too because they just passed their two-year mark for legalization. And here's also what happened. In two thousand fifteen, they generated a hundred and twenty-five million dollars in tax revenue by adopting a public health approach to marijuana. The state of Colorado collected a hundred and twenty-five million dollars, which will be used to allocate funds which will subsidize public education, behavioral health, law enforcement and youth prevention. Colorado and other pioneering states are showing us what a reality-based public health approach to marijuana looks like. They've also decreased crime rates across the board in their state by twenty-three percent. That's a huge number based on the population of the state of Colorado, twenty-three percent. What I'm gonna get right down to is when you make your vote to not allow legalized cannabis in our community, the message you're sending to the community of Ketchikan, the message you will be sending is that you basically don't care if the legal drug trade is gonna continue in our streets. It, it oftentimes is a reflection that in fact you support it. When you vote not to allow legalized cannabis, you deny the rights of many the ability to legally treat any number of debilitating diseases to those that could benefit the very most from it. I'm gonna give just one example tonight, veterans. Military veterans are one of the highest rates of suicides at an alarming twenty-two per day in our, in our United States of America. One of the biggest, um, diseases that they suffer is PTSD. Patients who suffer PTSD are typically treated with what they call SSRIs or selective serotonin reuptake inhibitors. They have a notorious reputation of being highly correlated with suicides. It's no coincidence that veterans commit suicide at this alarming rate of twenty-two per day. Clinical research shows medical marijuana is highly effective for treating PTSD and it also doesn't have the dangerous side effects of the drugs that they're currently being treated with. The previous emphasis of most of the meetings regarding legalized cannabis in our community's been surrounding children. I can't imagine how legalizing cannabis is going to make it easier for our kids to get a hold of this drug. It's going to make it harder for everybody to get a hold of it because it's going to take the dealer off the street. It's going to take them out of the picture, it's already been proven in other states that have legalized it. When you have conscientious cultivators, testers and retailers all working together to benefit this industry, then good things will happen. If you've read the hundred and twenty-page regulations the state of Alaska passed, you'll see how already tightly regulated this industry is gonna be. So when you vote, I want you to remember that your vote today will be your legacy tomorrow. The voting public of Ketchikan will not remember how fiscally responsible you were as a council. They're not gonna remember how well you represented our town on a state level. What they will remember is how you denied Ketchikan the ability to become pioneers in a newly emerging industry that could bring commerce and tax revenue to our city because of personal convictions. How you decided not to nurture a tax base with new businesses that the state of Alaska and the citizens of Ketchikan have already voted to expand upon. We will remember how you didn't respect our majority vote. And we created unnecessary restrictions above and beyond what the ballot measure two was already asking for. So I don't know how to make this point more clearer other than to say, to be honest, and say the voting public of Ketchikan wants it. We want you to do your jobs and make it happen so that we can be proud of the council that we put in place for our community. That's it, thank you.
Thanks Liz. Sean Holtz. Sean, are you here?
Sean, yes, I'm here. Okay, so I really can't say it better than what Liz said. It's, 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 it's medicine, it, it helps people, it's, it's, it bringing, bringing forth the marijuana and the money that we can make as a city and as a community. And I've been a member of this community my whole life and as a responsible adult, you know, I, 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 I'm a bartender, I see, I see alcohol abuse every single day. You know, and it's, it's, it's a shame that we, we allow alcohol and tobacco, things that are proven to kill people, and we don't allow marijuana. It's something that, something that, sorry, I lost my voice, but, um, and I also get stage fright, kinda.
Make your turn.
But, uh, you know, it's, this is, this is me speaking as a citizen, as a taxpaying citizen in this community that has, you know, I, I also help put together the skate park, you know, it, I, I help do a lot of, lot of other things for this place. I love this place, I, I plan to stay here for the rest of my life, but I, I want to look for a bright future in this town, in this community and okaying something, something that, that is, that doesn't kill people, that doesn't, you know, make, make any kind of, you know, negative implications. And, and like, like Liz was saying, you know, it's, somebody told me when I was, when I was working once, they, they said that, uh, it's not, they said marijuana is not a gateway drug. But marijuana being illegal is a gateway drug because when marijuana is illegal, you have to go to somebody else's house, you have to go to, you know, and, and that's, that's where they get you on, you know, other, other drugs that make you, you know, that, that do that, that sort of thing. But if we were to have something that were to regulate and to benefit from, it's, 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 you know, to, to avoid that is to blindfold ourselves. It's, it's, it's shameful, it's disrespectful to close our eyes to democracy, which is why we're all here. And, you know, I, it's just, it, I, I really hope that you, you all do make the, the right decision for the people. It's not, it's not gonna be in the hands of children, I mean, just as much as alcohol or tobacco reaches the, the hands of children, 'cause it does. You know, and, but it, it doesn't need to be that way, it doesn't need to be that way. We can, we can change that now. We can, we can make that choice and I hope that you're all with me. And that's all I have to say.
Thanks Sean. Sean Cregan.
I'd just like to reiterate a couple of points that have already been made. First of which is that by denying retail marijuana sales in the borough or city, you are in fact therefore reinforcing the black market sales, which, I mean, I've seen drugs, you know, on TV, but you're supporting, you know, people who are using their money dishonestly when it could be in fact revenue put into the city. I mean, maybe in fact, instead of considering an outright ban, consider more stringent restrictions like advertising or signage or instead of the five hundred feet from schools or other public properties, you know, uh, you know, well, maybe you guys understand what I'm saying? Consider a more open-minded approach than just, you know, it's a small town, we wanna keep it out. But the fact of the matter is, is it's already here, it's gonna be here, whether you guys want it to or not. And the fact if you guys go ahead and pass the initiative or agree with the state of Alaska's, the citizens have voted, then you get, we're gonna bring in more. I, uh, I don't really know what else the hell I'm gonna say. Sorry, excuse my language.
Thanks for coming. Thanks Sean. Jason Kalenko.
My name is Jason Kalenko. I've been a resident of Ketchikan for most of my life. I'm an active voter, I've participated in most elections. And when ballot measure two came up on the ballot, I decided to vote for it. And that's the ballot measure, uh, addressing the legalization of marijuana. And the reason I voted for it is because looking at the data and comparing the negative consequence profiles of marijuana to alcohol, the negative consequence profiles are generally much, much less severe than alcohol. And we have tightly integrated alcohol into our social and cultural structures in this country. And therefore I think we should be able to do the same thing with marijuana and our rational should be able to make the same decisions with marijuana as we do with alcohol. I wanted to speak on the ordinance that's planned on being read today. I believe that it would be a mistake voting for this ordinance because, um, I think we really need to address the black market in this, in Ketchikan. And that by bringing, by regulating and cultivating and bringing it to market marijuana in a legitimate fashion will not only create new jobs in a new industry, but it will help reduce the black market activity of this substance in this town. So when it comes to times to vote on this ordinance, I just ask you all to please vote against it and just according to the will of the constituents, who voted for ballot measure two in twenty-fourteen. Thank you.
Thanks Jason. Don, are you out there?
I'm out here.
Alright, come on up, Mr. Wright.
I see, I need no introduction.
You do not.
But I will. My name's Don Wright, I vote seven oh seven Harris Street, Ketchikan. And all of these people were coming up here and they were pleading with you to do what you're supposed to in the first place. It rocks my socks. You know, I mean, I'm a representative of government and it's kinda tiring to come here and try to express this in different words, the same old thing, but you guys aren't getting it at all. This, oh, we decided maybe we'll have a ordinance instead. Won't that sound better? Well, if no one's going to enforce it, it sounds wonderful. But are you, are you gonna have your police force out there on this ordinance? And if you are, it sounds like a lot of me. So you just, in the face of the majority of the population who you supposedly represent, five of you have decided to vote for the minority. So what it says is communities can opt out, it doesn't say five guys that aren't representing their majority can opt out for all of those people. Isn't what it says. And so what you're playing with is loss of faith on the part of the public and a recall election, which costs us a whole lot of money, takes a whole lot of time. And we have to re-elect people who understand that they represent the will of the people when they sit where you're sitting. And I don't get it, why this has continually been explained, week after week, why you come up with this kind of BS or this kind of BS. You know, it's just, try to understand, the majority vote population in this community isn't gonna just let this go that you can trample over him like a herd of elephants headed for fresh water. We voted the way we voted because that's what we wanted. We voted to have you be our representatives because we wanted you to represent our will. Now if you wanted to express your own concepts on your vote, then we'd like somebody else to represent us because you aren't. You're representing yourself. I didn't vote for you, I just didn't represent yourselves. Now then, on another issue, uh, which would be the three items in a row that mentioned you would like to forego the open bid process, advocate code on these three. Well, if it was an emergency situation, I can understand that. And if it's a contract that you've had for four years or so with the same company and here it is, the contract's coming up for renewal and you just need that, that makes sense as well. But if those aren't the cases, that it's not either a critical emergency right now or else it's an already contract discontinuing, then that code was put into place for a reason that says that it will be open to public bid. And it's to kind of slow down the good old boy network where if we get this, if we just forego the necessity for this to be open to bidding, then one of us, whoever's pulling the most punch can go ahead and toss it to his petty. Well, that's why the code was there, so you couldn't. So when you ask us, oh, let's forego the open bid process so that all of these people don't have a shot at it, what are you saying about the democratic way of doing things where everyone's got a right to be in business? Everyone's got a right to offer alternatives. And that there's reasons why you should take those alternatives, usually it's your pocket budget. But at least these people should have the right. Okay, and gosh, Liz, the last thing, 'cause I didn't know you were cross-eyed. I had no idea.
You're doing good.
You looked out there and you saw two people on this side with their hand up, two people on the other side with their hand up, hell, that's four, okay, let's put it on the agenda. So doggone it, but I'll remember it in the future and always step a little further to the right than I normally would as we pass.
Well, one thing's gonna happen, either if it passes or doesn't pass tonight, it still comes up in March, this, this issue still comes up, to decide the final decision about the council marijuana.
Cannabis thing?
Yes. This thing was brought up by the attorney just to make sure we cover our butts.
Yeah, well, more of this is what my conversation was about, wasn't whether these people were going to allow sales in Ketchikan or ban sales in Ketchikan. It's that there's any discussion of the issue whatsoever when you already know how the majority of the voting population voted.
Understood.
And if you're representing them instead of yourselves, then this shouldn't have ever occurred. And I'm real proud of you for making it possible for the people to come out and stand up and have conversation with you every time again, you know. So by golly, y'all hang in there and I'll see you later.
Thanks Don. Robert Hannah.
Well, alrighty guys, I'm Rob Hannah, I reside at five thirty Pine Street. This is my first time I've done a presentation here, so I'll try and kinda keep it organized and keep it all kinda concise and quick here. Anyway, um, there's been a lot of discussion around the legalization of marijuana here, the legalization of retail stores and whatnot. You know, I believe that- You know, I believe that throughout some of the depth and the intensity of a discussion like that, we've probably lost sight of a few of the really basic principles that we probably should be thinking about before we think about making any kind of a decision there. And the first of those is that I've heard a lot of different ideas and justifications for why one might oppose a sale, but none of them so far have been based in any kind of fact. All the arguments that I've heard are based on personal agenda. And, you know, it's, it's always, I don't like edibles, or I don't think that I like concentrates, or something of that nature. And all of these, to me, sound like really personal feelings and moral judgments, and not at all like points that are validated by any kind of science or research of any kind. So I would just love at some point if someone could show me where they've gotten some actual factual evidence to back up all of these doom and gloom predictions I keep hearing about how a simple store to retail perfectly legal substance is gonna ruin a beautiful community we have here. So the, the more I listen, the more I read into it, the only arguments I hear against a legal retail store are just a lack of understanding of how it's actually gonna go, but without any desire for clarification on the topic at all. Or, as I like to put it, good old classic American ignorance. So my second point, kind of leading off of that, is the voters have already spoken on this topic. Fifty-three percent of the state voted in favor of ballot measure two as it was presented. So the last time I did the math on it, fifty-three percent was more than half, the majority. And the last time I checked, in the United States, the majority did rule. You know, it's, it's quoted majority rule, it's not, the majority's opinion will be considered nicely by the governing body, and it's definitely not. The majority's opinion will be weighed against the personal morals of the small council. Now, your own personal and moral objections, those can be yours, but they have to be set aside in situations like this, and suffice it, suffice it to say, I don't really care, honestly, where your personal standpoints are on the topic. And I shouldn't have to. We, the people, should not be subject to your moral agenda. You should be subject to the will of the voting majority, which you stand here and claim to represent. That's basically the end of my point, so.
Thank you very much. Spencer. Spencer, there you are.
You guys can guess what I'm here to talk about. And, and there's a reason why I bumped up the apparel just a little bit. I thought, I thought, hey, I wonder what kind of looks I can get with this, or will people pay a little more attention to my apparel? And I noticed since I walked through that door, everybody's looked at me, kind of funny, and even stared a little. And I thought, hey, it works. It's kind of a test. We keep talking to you guys, and you guys don't listen. From the very beginning, when we voted on this issue, and a majority of the people said, you know what, we're gonna try something different than prohibition. Prohibition hasn't worked. That's the basis of this ballot initiative, that's what we set out to do here, from the very beginning. And, and, and every step of the way, if it just feels, I continually feel frustrated, you know, and the more I try to sit back and say, you know, just relax and let it take its course, you know, these things go real slowly. Slowly, hell, they ain't going nowhere. They've done, you've done literally nothing, because I sit down and, and I'm gonna kind of wrap both my points up in one, and I'm gonna make this real fast for the mayor, because he's in a hurry all the time with the comment. So, you know, uh, we're gonna, I noticed on the agenda, we're gonna go back, and we're gonna talk about that, that tobacco tax, the failed tobacco tax thing, because we brought it up last time around. We're gonna go back, we're gonna talk about that a little bit more, spend a little more time on that. And, and then I think about, well, how much, you know, we, we work a lot on, and even the tobacco thing. You know, we did a, a, a good part of our year last year was talking about that tobacco tax. And, and it went nowhere. Effectively, we got nothing for our money. And we talk about this stuff, and we tie up time, we got nothing for our money. And now you got the state who's levying a tobacco tax, you know, you're gonna dump that on at the same ti- timing is poor now. We'll go through, argue about this, probably the public will be just as vigilant this time. The borough was able to see the forest for the trees, and, and they weighed in on that, and so I think, I doubt, doubt that that's gonna be any more successful, but as we spend a lot of time on that this year, as we're going into our new year, we got this big topic on here. I say to myself, why, why are we in this pickle now? We're gonna hear the mayor, he talks about it tonight, he's gonna say, we gotta do this because Mitch told us that if we're running late here, and anybody goes in for those things there, we won't have any control. We lost our control because we, we waited too long. This is what we talked about in the beginning. This is what I was campaigning for when I ran, was that we need some people on here that can make decisions. See, when we voted for you guys, and I'm a little bit upset because Mr. Stevenson and, and the mayor, and this is my own personal opinion, because I voted for you two guys. Not only did I vote for you two guys, but I advocated for others to vote for you two guys, because I believed in you. I sat beside every one of those candidate things, and I listened very attentively on everything he said. I don't know how I could be any more educated than being a candidate and sitting next to you. And I heard you, Mr. Williams, say, when the question came up about marijuana, it seemed like it was always the voters spoken, it's the law of the land. A couple of us kinda chimed in with the same thing. And he gave me the indication that you were on board with this thing, that you were being reasonable. Mr. Stevenson kinda said the same thing. Now, you guys get into office, and the first thing we're talking about, we gotta ban it, I'm back on prohibition. We're in this pickle because nobody moved. We set advisory boards, and we said, hey, go advise us. What did we ask them to advise us on? Did we come back and say, hey, tell us what to do? Do we, do we do this, or don't? I don't think we ever really got any answers. We gotta, hey, KJ, you could go and represent or, or not, whatever you decide, whatever you decide, because we're just going on with prohibition. We got, this prohibition's in our mind, so that's what we're gonna do, this is our agenda. It goes against the majority of the people. And, and I understand, we're in a pickle now, because we're out of time, and that's why we're gonna do this moratorium kind of stuff, we're gonna hold off, we're gonna wait a little longer. I liken it to the same kind of politics that the environmentalists pull on us with the wolves. See, they effectively stop us from cutting trees, because they use the wolf. You see, just like this, oh, we don't have enough time, so we gotta, we're just stop everything. You know, effectively, you're, you're pushing your little agendas through, but we're not gonna just shut up. I'm gonna get louder each time I come here. I'm gonna come with my bags of tricks, I'm gonna keep talking, I'm gonna come to every one of these things, I'm gonna keep educating, I'm gonna keep talking to everybody on that street. We're not gonna stop. We're not just gonna roll over like sheep and let you hurt us into whatever pen you want. It's not gonna happen. It's gonna get louder. Let me give you an example. Could you imagine what would happen if on the first day of the cruise ship season, three hundred people walked down the dock with carrying a marijuana plant? Completely legal. They can do it. They, everybody's been really relaxed at this point. What if they took over City Park? With fifteen hundred people that are protestable, much like Seattle has every year. If they did that here, where would we put them if we want to enforce it? We've got like two beds and a side cell up at the jail. There's no enforcement on that? There's nothing, but these people are gonna speak louder if you continue to ignore them. That's what it feels like here. We're not getting solid answers, we don't have transparency in government. That's what we want. I also am very tickled about the idea of a recall. I got time, I got energy, I'm not on that council, no, I'm not spending all my time there, but we can keep you guys honest. I could put energies in, and I could get a lot more guys to sign on a petition than I can to get up and go vote. That's a whole lot more difficult. Think about what, like you said, your legacy tomorrow. I, I, I voted for you guys and I advocated for you two guys, because I believe in you two guys, I think you can do good work. This, we did nothing for a year, this is no surprise. Everybody's known we're gonna sell weed in the state of Alaska for over a year. The fact that you've done nothing to make any regulations, we were voting on someone to roll their sleeves up and get some work done. If the furnace guy comes out and I say, hey, I need my furnace fixed, you guys get three hundred bucks a meeting or something like that? I think mayor gets three fifty, something like that, right? Everybody gets something. You get paid for this meeting, right?
You bet, not three fifty.
About three fifty, three hundred?
I wish.
You wish? It's three hundred or something, I'm sure of that, I looked, I saw, I didn't even know you got paid, I was like, right? Whatever. You get paid for this meeting. Every one of these meetings we've had for a year, you've been paid for. If the furnace guy came out and I said, hey, fix my furnace, and he said, hey, give me three hundred bucks, and I'll tell you what, I'll just postpone you for like a month or two, or maybe six, how's that? I'm not giving him my money. And that's what we hired you guys for. I look at this more like a job, this voting thing, it, it appears to me like a business. And so I hire you guys to get stuff done. So far, your track record shows that you've got, you've made no decisions. I need someone that can make a decision, right, wrong, or indifferent. It, decisions need to be made, or we go nowhere. And so you've done nothing, and now we're looking at maybe March or September or something like that. I don't really get it, but if we continue like this, the voter's gonna have to speak louder, and we're gonna have to follow whatever legal channels we have, which will be some kind of recall or something. These people will gather up, they're gathering up, each meeting, it's getting bigger and bigger. Each time, this is a festering thing that's growing. I think I can organize it a little. So let's change our course, let's deal with what those people voted for us to deal with here. And let's just do that, all right?
Thanks, Spencer. Anybody else who wants to address the council tonight? Nobody else has signed up, anybody else want to speak? Come on up here.
Hello, my name is, my name is Dana White, I've lived here all my life. I've been heavily involved in the youth ever since I was a youth, and then when I graduated, I turned around and started working in the youth group in this town. I just wanted to say that I've heard a lot of mentioning on the side for the marijuana. And I've heard a lot of people say that you need to let the people vote. And I do believe that what, that is what needs to happen. We voted for it to be legal in Ketchikan. But bringing it into the market is bringing it to a whole nother level. I, if it's possible, because I know that a lot of people voted for, but I know that a lot of people voted not for it. Bringing it toward the people again, as the people are saying, letting the people vote on the retail of the marijuana, putting it back on the people, because that's what the people are asking for. Listening, letting the people vote for what they want in their own community. Yes, it is legal, yes, people are using it now. But bringing it into retail does bring it to a whole new level, and I do believe it is the right of the people to let the people vote and the majority say if it's to be a retail in Ketchikan. Like I said, I work with the youth a lot. And I've seen the effects of a teenage girl come and talk to me and say, I'm scared to go home. And that was when their parent, her mom and her boyfriend were just messing around with alcohol, and they were on binge, she was afraid for her little sister. And having the retail of marijuana, to bring that in, to make that even stronger, yes, cigarettes kill, yes, alcohol destroys families, all of this. But bringing marijuana in to make it even easier will add something else to that girl's life, along with the other junk. And I just hope that you will make the decision to protect the next generation coming in. Because, yes, like another person said, the teenagers are getting a hold of it now, I know. It will get a whole lot easier when it's in retail. They will send their friends who are legally able to get the marijuana, and then they'll disperse it among the ones that aren't. And it'll happen. And I hope you will do what's right for the community, and I do believe that another vote needs to happen, because legalizing the retail is a whole new story with this. And I hope that you do what's right for the next generation, because me and countless other people are working with the youth that have been affected by this. And the peer pressure in these schools is overwhelming to get into the stuff that they already have, and now they're putting another thing on the table for them to get easier. It's going to have an effect, and I do believe setting things back for a time was a good decision. I believe that right before you guys make the next decision in March, that you need to really pay attention to how the surrounding communities that have let the retail in has been affected. Like another person said, Colorado, the crime went down. I couldn't say this for sure unless I did study on it, but I'm wondering if the crime rate went down because marijuana wasn't illegal anymore and they weren't arresting people because of it. So we need to be careful, of course, but do what's best, concentrate on the next generation coming up. Because if they start getting a hold of it earlier and earlier into their teenage years, it's gonna be a vice that it will have an effect on them, it will have an effect on their decisions to become an adult. And I don't believe that's what we want for our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else want to address the council tonight?
I'd like to re-address the council, sir.
Well, I don't, make it quick, though. Yeah, that's just, she gets the only second.
The only rebuttal I have to what that young lady just said is this. If you have read the regulations the state of Alaska passed, you are gonna see how difficult it is going to be for any one of us to break into this new industry. Have you read it? It's lengthy. You're gonna have to have a lot of capital involved to even get a retail store, a cultivation, processing, going, or testing lab. The retail stores alone, right now, first of all, if you find a place to have a store, woo-hoo. Because I don't think one exists in Ketchikan. Pretty sure it's not gonna happen. Even if you can find a place, then what's gotta happen is you have to have security cameras inside and outside of your establishment that will log forty days, day and night of people coming in and out of your business. You have to have a point-of-sale system that tracks it from seed to consumer. All of this adds up to a whole lot of money. Not to mention the $5,000 application fee that you have to put up just to apply, which doesn't guarantee you a license. So the regulations have already got things built into place that are going to help us police the safe sale of cannabis to persons twenty-one and over. It's already built into the regulation, and I understand what that young lady was saying, is that they'll send in the people who are over twenty-one, they already do it. It's already here, alcohol everywhere. You watch, Alaska Liquor Store, for one, I know the owners personally, she's a very dear friend of mine. She has to educate her employees every single day about looking out for people outside of their store who are approached by young people to purchase alcohol, and they've been told and educated over and over again about not servicing these people. If I have a retail cannabis store in Ketchikan, I told you the last time I was up here, I know a lot of people in Ketchikan, I spent a lot of years in this community, and I have a lot of acquaintances and people that I know. So you can bet that I'll be watching for those youngsters outside my front door who's asking someone to come in and purchase for them, and they will not be purchasing. They're gonna all be carded, and they're all gonna be given my little mom's speech at the same time. So I understand everyone's concern here, but honest to God, people, we are pioneers. Let us have that pioneer spirit that Ketchikan, and for all that matter, Alaska has always embraced. Let us have that pioneer spirit that Ketchikan, and for all that matter, Alaska has always embraced. This is a new industry, let us grow it. Let us make you proud of how Ketchikan handles this. That's, that's, that's the final say I got.
Thanks, Liz. Happy no other persons to be here, then we'll move down to consent agenda. Do we have a motion to consent?
Your honor, I move to consent.
Do we have a second?
Your honor, a second that I wanna make a comment.
You betcha, Dick.
Actually, I'd like to pull that one off entirely.
Um, B two will make, will vote for everything, but B two and, uh, vote on that separately. I'd like to add six A one, if nobody has a problem. And I would like, I think that's about it. I don't think I have another. Nope, that's it. Oh, and appointments to boards and commissions. We can throw that on there, too. Anybody have a problem with adding those? Ed, can you read items?
Approval of minutes, special meeting of December ninth, two thou, and fourteenth, two thousand fifteen, and regular meeting of December seventeenth, two thousand fifteen. Liquor license renewals for the Best Western Landing slash Jeremiah's, Mike's Elbow Room, Sourdough Bar, um, Sourdough Liquor Store, Annabelle's Famous Cane and Chirr House, The Asylum, and the Alaska Liquor Store. Exempting the procurement of annual billing, software maintenance, and support for the telecommunications division from competitive bidding requirements with COMSO. Exempting the procurement of the annual tier three, and this will be a separate vote.
Yep.
But I'll read it anyway.
Yep, keep going.
Tier three technical support and special project services for the telecommunications division from competitive bidding requirements, Daniel White Engineering and Associates. The renewal of the telecommunications division's network monitoring, customer support, and email platform agreements with NeoNova. Ordnance number fifteen seventeen ninety-five, amending the Ketchikan Municipal Code, section fourteen point four zero, to increase rates and fees for the use of mortgage facilities, and that's a second reading. And appointments to boards and commissions for the boards that are listed there.
Thank you very much. Um, any comments other than, um, B two? Call the rule on everything but B two.
Harris?
Aye.
Zingy?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Alright, that passes, uh, six to nothing. That brings us to, um, five A, or B two. Um, Dave, you wanted to bring it up?
Uh, do we need a motion?
I think the motion's already there.
Okay. Actually, Dick, did you want me to say?
Uh, I guess my comment is that this apparently item has stirred up some controversy, and we've seen what was laid on the table, and, and my lack of knowledge of the even was stirring part of it doesn't make any difference to me. Um, I guess I've got a concern with a forty-one percent increase in this budget. I think telecom and I'll be real fun is out of control with what it costs us. And I also believe that sometimes we're being misled. Um, I, I, I can't support this, and I won't support it. Uh, if it's last year's budget, I'll leave it alone at that, but I'm not gonna support an increase of forty-one percent. We're trying to watch our cost, and telecom's gonna have to do the same thing. And I'm, I, and I'm not technically competent enough to argue. I think the guy's probably totally competent, not the contractor. I think it's our management, and have it, I mean, it's spin, spin, spin. And that's where I'm coming from.
Carl, you wanna address the increase?
I can, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
As I pointed out in the supplemental report that was transmitted to the council yesterday, this is not an increase in the compensation paid to the contractor, Councilmember Kuz. It's an increase in the scope of work that we need to do to keep the network stable and secure in order to provide quality service to the customers. It's as simple as that. Mr. Cushing took over as telecom manager several years ago. We indicate, indicated to the council at that time that there were major problems with the network that had to be endorsed, or addressed. At that time, the council concurred with management and allowed, uh, Daniel White, Engineering and Associates, to assume for a temporary period of time the role of our network engineer. Through a lot of effort on his part, and, and equality of service above and beyond what our technicians can provide, we were able to stabilize the network. And that, that has continued through today, and we're trying to continue that level of quality service as we go forward. You can say that you're not gonna support an increase in the need, uh, to, to support the network. Council can make that decision. But if the network starts to go awry, and we start having outages, don't point your finger at me, don't point your finger at the telecom manager. It's gonna come squarely back to the council. You pay us to give us our best recommendations as to what we need to support the services that the utility as a whole offers, be it water, electric, or telecom. And that's what we're recommending to you tonight. Council doesn't wanna do it, that's your, that's your decision.
Dave?
Um, I guess the most salient point that the manager's gave is the word temporary. Uh, how many years is temporary? Five, six, seven, eight, fifteen? I am not going to, I, I don't know this particular consultant. He's probably really, really good. And I don't, I don't even wanna remotely be besmirching what he's done for, for telecom at all. I'm just, I, I just have some real concerns with how this is, how this is being handled. We basically now have created a situation where we are paying apparently an individual, that there are, there may be associates involved, um, a hundred dollars an hour for a full-time job, thirty-seven and a half hours a week. That's a lot of money. Um, then we're now, now we're gonna make it a sole source, or actually, we're continuing a sole source situation. We're not, at, at least from the council standpoint, we're not reevaluating it. We're just kicking it down. Um, third, it was on the consent agenda. Anyway, that just, you know, I have said numerous times, I'm not a big fan of sole source things, so I have to admit, I don't know a whole lot about telecom. There are probably a lot of situations where sole source is a good idea, is, is probably the best, most, I don't think. I was a little concerned in the material we got today. Basically, the, the, the tone I got was from, um, it would be foolish and a waste of time to go act out with this, this again, and try, try to find something else. Maybe that's true, but that's not staff's call. That's our call. And having this kind of presented to us in a, a faded complaint, consent agenda kind of thing, kind of, kind of bothers me a little bit. Because I think the reality is, we need to be evaluating these things. And maybe we're not capable of it, maybe it's, it's, it's beyond our, our ability to grasp it, I don't know, but just the whole way this was presented just kinda left me, even, even before this whole other sidelight kinda rolled up, looking at this and, and the agenda, I kept thinking, it just, I just did not feel good about it. It's, I don't know what to say.
Anybody else? Janalee?
Um, I kinda looked at it, and I went through it, and there are some things where I can see. It'd be nice to see, um, what he's done in the last, I mean, I, I know that the KPU has, has gotten better. Um, I'm, I use it. Um, but I'd like to, I think the community needs that openness, that, okay, this is what it would cost, and if we went in bed, what it, what we would end up with, and what the actual cost for somebody that does this kinda work. Um, did a little research, and it was expensive. And based on this contract, it makes sense, but at the same time, I think there needs to be a little, I think it'd be good to, um, address the fact that it beeped out a bit.
Judy?
I think anytime something, um, that's this, that's going up by this much, it is on the consent agenda, um, it's a little bit difficult to swallow. I had problems with this. Um, I went out and asked a bunch of questions, got my answers. I did some checking myself, because in my mind, I was like, why doesn't this person work for us? Where, what happens to this knowledge if he leaves? I always, what comes to my mind is SIPA, because we have kind of a situation like that there. Um, so I worry about those kinds of things. Um, I did ask the questions, I feel that they were answered. I also went back and looked at what we did last year. And this was on the consent agenda last year, and we passed it like it was nothing. So, you know, I look at that, and then I go, and now I'm, I was gonna use a bad word. I'm complaining that I'm not getting enough information this time, but I didn't need it last year. You know what I mean? So I think it's hard for staff to really know what we want from them. And, and I think maybe that's where we have to start, that when we're putting something forward like this, we ask more information. It didn't help that, um, you know, several of us were contacted, um, by the young lady who posted something on Facebook. Uh, and, you know, that always takes off and has a mind of its own. But, um, after reviewing all this, frankly, I'm, I wasn't okay with it in the beginning. I am okay with it now, because there is that side of me that believes, and I have to believe, that, uh, we're hiring people to do these jobs. We have to have faith in their ability to do the job. And if we don't, then we have a bigger problem, and we need to address that, and not tear apart these things. That's my two cents.
Carl, maybe we should have Mr. White come and explain what he does, so everybody understands what the process is.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd like to call on Mr. Cushing to come up to the podium.
You bet.
And while he's making his way up, one thing I'd like to remind the council, you have to understand that every year, our network grows increasingly complex. You authorized a five million dollar investment to do a 4G LTE wireless system in a microwave circuit down to Prince Rupert. That involves now connections down to Seattle. We are not the planal telephone company that we were ten years ago.
Well, I understand that, Carl, and, um, what I'm thinking is, a lot of us probably are just confused on what actually he does and what type of work it is, and if he could, um, educate us, I think that would be, um, probably a lot of, um, help. Dick, I mean, Ed?
Thank you. Ed Cushing, telecommunications division manager. As Mr. Amal was explaining, today's telecommunications network, KPU operates in Ketchikan, is far, far different than the network we had just six years ago, just three years ago, and bears no resemblance to the network we were operating eight years ago or any time prior to eight years ago. At one point, and for most of its history, KPU Telcommunications was a very simple dial-tone telephone company. That was it. It sold telephone service, nothing much to it, really. Today, we're completely different. In fact, with a slight change in regulations at the federal level, we won't be operating planal telephone service at all, because most of us, including me, will disconnect. We only use dial-tone because we're required to. We have, not only on the retail side, offering television, 4G LTE, and internet service, and data hosting service, and high-cap service to our business customers, and, and the most advanced, uh, hosted IP business telephone service in the United States. But the underlying technology necessary to do all that is some of the most advanced technology you will find anywhere in the United States. In fact, we lead most of the United States. Like it or not, you have a multi-million dollar investment in the most advanced network in the United States. But we are not a large company. The, the technical competency required to operate this thing requires two, essentially, two types of network personnel. The local folks who do what I'll call, that, 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 no, no attempt to minimize them, but it requires a maintenance-level type of expertise. Their training and education necessary to do that is here. You don't need a college degree to do it. We call it tier one. Beyond tier one, there's tier two and tier three, which is the area where, in which Mr. White operates. That's the type of technical competency that is able to look at all the various moving parts of the KPU telecom network, including the stuff in Skagway, Prince Rupert, and where we meet the world, down in Seattle, where we actually have a relatively large complex of equipment today. And is able to understand that if we do X to box B, we will blow up the rest of the network in the boxes twelve through thirteen. And it becomes more and more and more complex the more and more stuff we do. And our tier one technicians, our CONTs, our full-time employees, are not trained, educated, or otherwise equipped to do what Mr. White does. Mr. White operates in an atmosphere, or in an area of the industry where in which people like Mr. White are in great demand, at Cisco, at Yahoo, at you name it. Mr. White operates in an, in an arena where full-time employees that have his skill set typically run two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, which is why we've not intended, been attempted to employ someone like that full-time. As a practical matter, we're a small company that can't afford those type of wages, even though we're in the business that requires that type of talent. So we have to go out and find that type of talent on a contract basis. We're fortunate that Mr. White decided several years ago, two years ago, to relocate to Ketchikan, so we get a great deal on his, on his time and expertise. I, I, although it's not directly a question you asked, I'll basically straight out. It's crystal clear to me that the young woman who contacted most of you initially works for the IBW. We're in a labor impasse with the IBW right now. You should ask yourself the question, because I do every day, if that leads to a work stoppage or a strike, guess who the number one resource I need to keep this thing alive is? Daniel White. And I am not gonna go out on the street and find a replacement for Daniel White, who on day one, or even on day six hundred, has the intuitive understanding and the exact knowledge of our network that is required to keep this thing moving forward. Is it risky to have that much invested in a contractor? As noted in my memo, over the last five years or so, we've had four central office net, network technicians, full-time employees, leave us and move either north or south. We went through a period of time where we went through four network engineering managers before we secured Mr. Esposito, who's now been with us two years. Throughout that period of time, Mr. White has been with us and available on a contract basis. And we would've been in a great deal of trouble if we hadn't. It is counterintuitive to, to, to think about that, because usually you're looking at the full-time workforce, thinking that's where we need to keep the knowledge and expertise. But we are in an odd situation here, where we don't pay market-based wages for telecom personnel, especially management and engineering people. We're competing with the rest of the world. We all like to think they're city employees, in fact, they're telecom employees. I can't go into the, I can't go into the city workforce and find replacements for these people. I compete with the outside world. And in tier two and tier three level work, it's, it's, I don't know. It's the difference between looking for an astronaut at the tier two and three level versus looking for a Chevy mechanic at the tier one level. It, I'm sorry, that's the way it is. You've asked me, and you've employed me to do the best possible job leading this division. I'll point to the results over the last four years.
We're not questioning your ability or anything.
Actually, I'm sorry, but I heard that from Mr. Kuz. If I misunderstood, I apologize.
We're on this part, go ahead.
I have a telephone, pardon, we don't need it.
Judy, Judy's got the floor, Dick.
Is it, is it possible to have Mr. White come and talk to us?
No, I'd be happy to do that in executive session. Mr. White exists in a competitive world, in a competitive enterprise, and I don't think it's fair to him to ask him to come and do this in public. Executive session, absolutely.
Dave, then Bob.
Are we creating a situation, looking ahead?
Sure.
Where we are basically creating this, or actually, he probably, recommend, he exists, a person who is so valuable, so crucial to, to the operation, that we're eventually, I mean, okay, we're, we're, we're raising the amount, we, we've increased the scope, we're raising it two hundred thousand, no, two fifty next year, three, I mean, what? That's what, that's what I worry about. Because, A, we're, we're not making, we're not making sure there isn't someone else out there that can provide this service. We're basically saying, okay, our eggs are here, this, this, this is the basket. At some point, is that gonna bite us?
But hasn't in nine years. Um, and we have been bitten by our full-time workforce over the last nine years in terms of trying to keep people down on the farm, or keep them out on the payroll. Um, so my answer to that is generally no. If he gets hit by a bus tomorrow, then I'm gonna have to start all over. But I'm hoping that, A, he doesn't, and B, he spends, uh... But I'm hoping that, A, he doesn't, and B, he spends, uh, during the hours he works for us, we make a concentrated effort to ensure that he is either with our network engineering manager, or with our full-time network engineer, or with our CONTs, so that the knowledge is being spread, um, to the maximum extent we can. He does do a good deal of his work in the maintenance window hours between midnight and five, because we often have to shut the network down, we don't want to shut customers off. And we pay double time to text to work with him during those periods, so we tend to just keep one tech aside. So we're doing the best we can to spread the knowledge, but as far out as I can see, just given the, the manner, I should say, given the complexity of the network and how it's developed, um, when we're, in which it's become a network of networks, so to speak, where everything has to be a, a web that's woven together, that, uh, nothing fails because it's interconnected with all the other parts on a redundant basis, we will always need a tier two slash tier three level of support. And the support we get from Mr. White right now is, even though this particular PO is expensive, it's the most affordable by an order of magnitude or two way of getting it done. And, um, and he's a young guy, so, at least compared to me. So, um, you know, I think we're, we're covered in good shape for the next four or five years. What happens after that, no one knows with Telcom, but...
Covered, covered in terms of scope the next four or five years or covered?
Scope and technical capability and his availability and, um, uh, as long as he remains available, we're in good shape. And I don't think we're, we're, uh, we're, we're not at risk of the complexity of the network getting beyond his capabilities and his ability to, to work with the network. It's just, I see it as part, part of the everyday requirement of running the Telcom division. We have our local employees, we have a local management team, and we'll always need expert, outside expertise. That's just the nature of the dis, beast. And if we try to hire a full-time employee for that second and third level of expertise, we won't be able to afford it unless you're ready to jack up everyone else's wages. So, that's the nature of the Telcom business.
Hey, Bob has a question.
Sure.
No, I have, I have some comments too.
Do you?
I, I originally, uh, before the deliberation and other people started calling, I just called doing some background to see who Mr. White was.
Sure.
Um, now, and again, it pointed out very clear here, I think the implication was that we're giving this guy a raise, and the reality of it is, his hourly rate of service as a contractor stayed the same, it's just that we're going to provide more work. The other thing I want to remind people is, we're supporting now a local business. This guy is working in this community, owns property in this community, are he renting property, whatever he's doing, I don't know that for sure, and he's buying his groceries here and, you know, he live in here. And I think that anytime that we have somebody of this type of caliber, uh, that can provide this type of work in the community, it's in our best interest to support that. And as you look at the, the sole source information under the, uh, the section in the code that says that, um, when we can demonstrate, you know, that the experience and knowledge is required, or that one person, our firm can clearly perform those required tasks more satisfactorily because of the person our firm's prior worked. This guy has been working for the utility, doing his work for how long yet?
Nine years.
Nine years. He knows what we put together, and it didn't come together all at once. This has been added to over a period of time. I remember at one point, we hired, we, we bought some gear to put it in, and we had this other gear coming, and all of a sudden, when they both got in, they didn't talk to each other. They didn't have the same language. That had to be correct, and this is the type of work that this type of person does. We've had a difficult time hiring professionals. We have looked for, uh, engineers in, in both public works and telecommunications, and I think, and actually in electrical too. And it's very hard to attract those individuals to our community. They, with their skill sets, they can work just about anywhere. We have contracts, um, for marine, uh, construction, where we hire marine engineers at a much higher cost than what we're doing here at a hundred dollars an hour, because their expertise. We can't attract doctors to this community because, um, there's either not enough work or attraction for them to come here. So we pay a premium service when we have visiting physicians. When we put in, uh, a large electrical project, we have to hire construction engineers for a lot of that kind of stuff, for their expertise. And we do legal work. Outside of the realm, what we can handle in our local law department, we pay a price for that. Um, and this gentleman is billed on a quarter hour increment when he does work. If, if he doesn't use a full, what it would be, um, nineteen hundred and fifty hours, he doesn't get paid for it. If, if, whatever, but when we talked about keeping the telecommunications company, there was the understanding, and there was a, there was a, our manager told us, it's going to be costly, because in order to keep up with the market, we have to advance in technology, and that comes at a price. And, and so, this, this is the kind of stuff that I think is fairly normal. I, I call a couple of telecommunications companies and ask them about everything. It's expensive to run telecommunications, because it's technical. You know what it's like when you're a computer. You buy one and it's out of date. And, and then you, you buy one and it goes broken, you gotta go take it to somebody to fix it, because you just can't, you just can't do that stuff anymore. It's not a fifty-seven Ford that I can take the carburetor off and put it back on in a day. I don't even change the plugs in my wife's car anymore, because I can't see them, can't find them. So, uh, there are certain times when we either have a sole source provider because we're utilizing their software. There, there are times when we have to use sole source providers, um, because we have situations where they're very familiar with the operation systems that we have, because it's not something that is cookie cutter. It's, it's not something that they have someplace else. So, um, again, I, I just started out asking who the guy was and, and looking for a website for him, and then I got, and, and the information I appreciate you providing, it's information. And I, and I don't think I should be micromanaging management. They, they need to make the decisions on that level. They can't bring every one of them to the council. I think it's appropriate that we question this after we add some concerns raised, but I, but myself, I believe that, um, I'm comfortable with the answers that I gave, that I got, so...
The other conference where we vote.
I got one.
You bet, General Lee.
Um, and I did the same thing. I went and asked a couple of people that I know that do that kind of work, and, and the thing is, is with a contractor, you're paying, they're paying their own health insurance, they're paying their own, um, liability insurance. Um, they have to take all these, their taxes, all those things into consideration, and those, and an employee would actually have that built into their salary. I, I think the only, my only concern really was, um, in a sense, being a little more transparent, just so that people understand that part of it, transparency to the community. And, and knowing that we actually went into the, you know, just in, like, you know, people are saying, oh, you're just throwing things through and just taking the time to look it through. I mean, I can tell, I mean, just based on the history, he's done a great job, but, um, and knowing that in a lot of other communities, it's a two hundred and fifty an hour job.
Sure.
But it would be, I think it would be nice to actually meet him and just, I mean, get a sense of, um, who he is and...
Sure.
Thank you very much, General Lee. All right, call the roll.
Zingy?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Cus?
Nope.
Gage?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Okay, that passes five to one. That brings us now to new business, seven, the new business seven A one, discussion of tobacco excise tax, council member Gage. What would you like to do?
I was kind of wondering if we could, um, see if the borough would be interested in revisiting, um, based on the information from last July? I think that, from what I read in here, that they would, they were, had tabled it for a while, to see if we can get in, be on the same page.
I think Bob mentioned we're sending it back to the, um, yeah, cooperative.
Sure, let's put it in.
All right, probably relations committee. Who's the members on that then?
I don't.
Okay.
Ian and KJ.
Okay.
I was raising my hand, they were something.
Well, well. Since we, um, approved it last time the borough did it, um, it's probably best to start there. If they have no interest still, then to me, it's a dead issue, so, KJ?
Didn't the state just increase the, uh, the cigarette excise tax?
Yes, it did.
Yes, it did.
Uh, how much was that, if I can?
I don't remember. Anybody know?
They just did now.
I think they just did.
I think it's proposed in the governor's budget as part of the revenue, of course. I don't think that has been passed yet, and they predict a percentage.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Dick.
Uh, you said if the cooperation committee doesn't want to do it, or the borough doesn't, it's a dead issue, and I don't think we'll leave it at that.
We can bring it back here and do anything.
Maybe we bring it back here, and we'll have to do what the borough wants to do.
That's true. Thank you, Dick. All right, we'll send this to the cooperative relations committee. That brings us down to seven eight two, hospital transition phase with Leighton Dawson. Um, do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Bob.
I move the city council also to send a manager into a contract number sixteen dash oh eight, pre-construction services, Ketchikan Medical Center Expansion Project Transition Phase, in the amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven between the city of Ketchikan, Leighton Dawson, joint venture construction, approving funding from the Ketchikan Medical Center Expansion Project Transition Phase capital account, and direct the city manager to execute the contract documents on behalf of the city council.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Carl, are these guys going to, is this contract to review what the architect has done for the next phases?
Review and offer their technical input relative to the final design that we come up with, that a final GMP would be based on. This is the same exercise that we went through for phase one, where they are brought in to assist in putting together the final design specifications.
When will we see that final design?
Matt, do we have a timetable on that?
Matt Brown, engineering technician. Uh, basically, we're, right now, this is to price a sixty-five percent schematic design. Uh, this pricing will be reviewed, uh, January nineteenth, and then, uh, given that pricing, we'll fine tune the drawings, and then that would be, uh, end of April.
Thank you very much. Dick?
Yeah, is there a way we can get some information on what it is they're designing? Is that just, hey, here's money, here's what's being designed?
We can get you...
Can we see anything at all, as we go along?
We can get you a scope, Councilmember Cus.
Excuse me, Bob, I guess I should have started with you, since you made the motion.
That, that just fine. Again, I think there was four priorities that we set out for some of this stuff. Is that correct, Carl?
I believe so, Councilmember Severson.
Uh, Matt, do you remember what those four priorities are? I think you have them listed in here too, I'm just looking for them.
Uh, yeah, the four priorities are, uh, priority one is the transition phase, uh, from the existing building to the new building.
So that, that's making them connect up correctly, so that all the traffic flow and everything else that can be done.
A corridor connection through, uh, current ORs into the new building.
And so, the, the, from what, and, and I'd like to thank Matt McCruy, I went out and did a, a walk through the hospital the other day. So as I understand it, the main entrance into the new section goes right through the existing surgery suites?
Correct. There's, well, there's two, you're right, there's, there's access to the, through two entrances. One through the existing ORs, the other one is actually, uh, right outside the double elevator lobby in the main lobby. But that's kind of a back-up house just for, uh, it's a straight shot into the ORs, so that could just be for, uh, that type of access. So, back to the priorities. So priority one is going to be that transition phase. Uh, priority two is going to be the imaging department, a complete build-out, uh, and rebuild of the imaging department. And then priority three was, um, some, some lab renovations, additional drains, uh, additional casework in the lab. And then fourth was, uh, is the, um, therapies department, so the entry in the lobby to the therapies department. And I can provide those forms.
Your Honor.
Yeah.
So, um, by getting through design, we'll get a better understanding what the cost of those individual phases is going to, going to run.
Correct, at the sixty-five percent level, right, that pricing comes in, and we...
And, and if I remember right, when I, when we originally were looking at this kind of stuff, the phases get less expenses going from one to four.
Correct.
Small, smaller parts of the project.
Correct. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Thanks, Matt. Call the roll.
Severson?
Yes.
Cus?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Kifer?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to nothing, brings us down to seven eight two, uh, no, seven three, ordinance sixteen eighteen oh eight prohibiting the operation of marijuana cultivation facilities, marijuana, uh, product manufacturing facilities, marijuana testing facilities, and retail stores, setting forth a sunset provision, first reading. Do we have a motion?
Hey, Your Honor.
Yes, Dick.
I move the city council approving first reading, ordinance number sixteen eighteen oh eight prohibiting the operation of marijuana cultivation facilities, marijuana product and manufacturing facilities, marijuana testing facilities, and retail stores, setting forth a sunset provision and establishing a protecting...
Second. Moved in second. Dick?
Uh, I think this just gives us the opportunity to remain where we are until we see what the state rules and so forth are, and we'll deal with it in the next couple of months. Do, do we need to make a section one amendment to this?
Yes.
Yes.
You know, I mean, can I do the same thing on the amendment?
Yes.
Uh, I moved amend section one, the proposed ordinance number sixteen oh eight to read as follows. Section one marijuana statute prohibits the operation of the marijuana cultivation facilities, marijuana product manufacturing facilities, marijuana testing facilities, and retail marijuana stores is prohibited. It's already in there.
Paragraph one is missing.
Paragraph one is missing.
As an ordinance.
Okay, we left out the ordinance part, okay.
Do we have a second?
I'll second the amendment.
Thank you. All right, anybody else, Bob?
Yeah, um, again, uh, we, we are looking at, um, at postponing this for a period of And the borough would still have the ability to move ahead with it on a different timetable if they should choose to do so. I would like to amend the motion so that marijuana testing facilities would be allowed within the city limits, get inside the city. Uh, and my reasoning for that, oh, I guess the theaters of...
Second.
Second. Is, you know, most of the, for rent spaces that would be able to house such a facility are probably within the city limits, and so, um, that is fairly a benign part of, of the, uh, retail, the, um, process of, of moving forward with some type of a cultivation or manufacturing operation. So, um, I think that that would be allowable in the community, and it still has to meet all the regulations and zoning codes provided.
Your Honor, I'm not so sure that the amendment is appropriate at this time until the First Amendment is dealt with.
In the middle of it.
Because we're not in the middle of it.
Oh, okay. All right, let's deal with the first one, then have Bob knock that one up.
Right.
So let's vote on the First Amendment, if everybody's ready to, unless somebody wants to speak to the amendment.
Pick me, pick me.
KJ?
Okay, I could have my timing wrong, but I believe we've been working on this since about February twenty-fifth of last year. Pardon my French, we ain't done a damn thing. In this whole year, we have not done a damn thing. We've took little pictures and seen where the zoning laws might be, how far we can be from a church, all this kind of stuff, but we as a council have not done a damn thing. Now, we're going to back everything off another thirty days, sixty days, whatever that is, and not do a damn thing. And when the state comes up with laws, maybe we'll do something, maybe it won't. I got to tell you, I'm pretty ashamed of being on this council the way this thing has come down. I'm just not happy at all with the way it's come out, and that we have never sat and had any kind of in-depth discussion of marijuana, the pros and cons. It's been a he said, she said, one side against the other. We haven't got a damn thing done, and I'm just, the idea of backing it up, pushing it away again, just seems really wrong to me. That's it.
No, we're, um, you know, I think the council has, um, taken up the issue. We've, um, originally said no, then we got council members that changed their mind, so now we're going to bring it again up after the state's finished. Um, it's either go ahead and do it or not, and if we finally decide to do it, then we need to, you know, make sure we have the ordinance in, on place, but the first decision is, are we going to do it or not? And hopefully, in March, we'll have a decision one way or the other, and it won't be changed one way or the other, so we can move forward and everybody knows where we're at. So I, um, all I can say is, um, I support, um, this ordinance. In March, we've got to make a decision, and we'll make sure everybody on the council's Um, if somebody's missing and I'm voting, then we could come back to the next meeting, and somebody could re, bring it up, because they're not happy with the way I voted. So we'll have the council make the decision. All I say is, make sure we make the decision, and we're gonna stick to and move on.
Can we vote on the amendment before we get too far into the decision?
Sorry.
Going down a rabbit hole.
All right, call.
This is just for the amendment. It just makes the language consistent throughout the ordinance.
Yeah.
So that's all it is.
Yes. First amendment. Call or roll, please.
Zingy?
No.
Coos?
Yes.
Keifer?
Yes.
Harris?
No.
Seaverson?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Okay, that passes four to three, the amendment passed. Bob, you had amendment?
Yeah, I moved amend so that, uh, we take the restriction of marijuana testing facilities, um, outside of the prohibition.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
Okay, second. Are you guys ready to vote on that? Dick?
I, I guess, Bob, I need to ask you to explain to me, I, I don't see any advantages taking that out of there. If we, whichever way we go, it's gonna be there next time, so why start pulling things out piece-me? I, I, I can't support the amendment to pull things out piece-me.
Bob?
Well, again, you know, um, there, there's another government body that can move ahead in a different timetable than we're doing. And, um, uh, we have, um, you know, the opportunity, I think, to, if they want to do that, that's fine. But this, as far as I see, the testing facilities are a fairly benign part of that whole operation. And the retail space that's available is really within the city limits. If they're gonna go that way, um, I don't see any problem with them having a testing facility within the community. That's gonna be probably one of the harder parts to put together.
Anybody else? Kelly?
Is it possible, too, to maybe, um, I don't know if the community's gotten a copy of the map? Does, like, the testing part of it being in, I, you know, having that posted, so people understand the, the lack of space for even just for the, the retail part of it? But would it be the same for the, um, testing? That would be the only question I have.
Your Honor, I probably should just redraw this, withdraw this, because I think the way the timetable runs is the first permit application can be in February. But then there's ninety days for approval, so we're gonna be past our, on our deadline anyway, I would think.
Okay.
I'm not sure where that's gonna fit.
Well, yes, um, one of the things I heard at the state level when I went up for my, um, uh, meeting where, um, uh, was that the number of applications they expect to get in, they were actually looking at, it was probably gonna take a year to even process most of them. I'm not sure how they're gonna get them all done in ninety days.
True.
Just to keep it simple, I withdraw.
Okay, second withdraw?
That's fine.
That's withdrawn, so now we're back to the main motion on the first reading of the ordinance, which we come back again next meeting, then we'd be ready to start talking about it in March. Um-
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Bob.
First of all, I, I know that there have been a lot of comments in regards to what the voters voted for. Um, and it's the same thing that happened in Colorado. In Colorado, when I looked it up, over seventy percent of the counties opted out of the retail sale of marijuana in the state of Colorado. Only thirty percent of them that have it. And those are in the larger metropolis area, I think. Of course, the difference there is you can drive to a place and get the marijuana where, where, where it's somewhat different at. The other thing is that Colorado has medical marijuana also, which I think our state fell down on in, in regards to, uh, regulations. And I know this was just for the recreational use, but I think that there is a need to have some kind of a medical marijuana system in place. There was also discussion about the benefits of medical marijuana, and I don't dispute that. I don't, I don't have the expertise to say yes or no. But I do know that there are a lot of cannabinoids out there for sale through pharmacies that provide the medical benefits of the marijuana without the THC, that provide for appetite, anti-nausea, uh, comfort, that type of stuff, um, that can be prescribed, whether or not they can prescribe in the state of Alaska. I, I don't know that yet. But I think that's one of the things that, uh, in the medical fields is, um, advancing quite rapidly. I think I take some exception at the fact that by banning this, we're supporting the illegal drug traffic. I, I don't think that's anywhere's, um, in my thought process when I, when I work with this. The availability of legalized recreational sale will increase the availability of use. As I talked, uh, earlier, uh, growing up in this community under the age of twenty-one, I had a lot of, uh, classmates that we drank alcohol every, every drop bowl we bought in a legal licensed retail store. Had there not been a retail store in Ketchikan, um, some of my classmates would still be alive today. At least I would think so. And when you sit at the table here, you weigh, um, the information that's provided. And I read a lot of stuff on, um, what the duties are of council members or assembly members or that kind of stuff. And, and part of the public comment, it's just part of what you weigh, because you have no way of really knowing whether it's the vocal majority or minority. You don't know. But you take it to heart and you weigh it, uh, and we get, I get a lot of comments and conversations outside of this room in regards to this, that is opposite of what I hear in the room, so I have to weigh that also. And then, you know, there's things in other communities, other states, that are legal prostitution is legal in some state. Doesn't mean that I'm gonna bring it to Ketchikan.
It's already been-
We talk about the, um, black market. The black market's gonna continue to exist. And just because that black market is working in Ketchikan doesn't mean that we should legalize cocaine. Doesn't mean that we should legalize heroin. Those things are still gonna be done in the black market in Ketchikan. And with that, there's gonna be marijuana that isn't taxed, gonna be sold. I don't disagree with the gentleman that said the addiction or the, um, gateway drug is not necessarily always the drug itself, but it's the social aspect. You go to someplace, you're smoking marijuana, you're, you're laid back, your defenses are down, somebody brings something, well, let's try this, let's try that, you know? And, and that's the way it goes. So there is an inherent issue in regards to being a gateway drug in that aspect. And that's gonna happen still, because you cannot smoke it in a public place. So you're gonna go to parties or whatever, and somebody's gonna bring something else. That's gonna happen. And then, to think that a council member, and you weigh all that stuff, if you think a council member doesn't put his own feelings into this. I have grandchildren that talk to me about this stuff that are in school now. And thank goodness, uh, from everything that I can gather, they're, um, opposed to any kind of drugs and alcohol at this point in time. And they're fourteen years, and I feel fortunate for them. But that does weigh on a decision made by any one of us here. You can't help but weigh that. So when I make these decisions, um, there's a lot of things, a lot of thought that goes into it, and I stay up at night thinking about it. It, it's not an easy thing to sit up here and listen to people, um, on our opposite side of where you're, uh, berate you for your opinion. I, I don't berate them for them. I, I understand where they're coming from. I get that. But I'm the one sitting in this seat that have to make that decision at this time, so that's just where I'm at.
Thank you, Bob. Um, the only thing is, I have the combat. Um, Spencer did mention that he heard me say that I was, um, not against, um, the marijuana thing. Every time I was asked, I told him as long as there's edibles and concentrates, I'd vote against it, having, um, any kind of retail sales in Ketchikan. So I want to make that clear. Um, second of all, you know, this is, um, Ketchikan, this is Ketchikan City Council, and we listen to everybody. I hear people here on the street, just like Bob, and then the people here, and I look at what I think would be good for Ketchikan. And, um, you know, I'm still not a fan of concentrates or edibles, probably never will be. Um, there's still, the borough has to make the decision, Saksman has to make the decision, the city of Craig, you know, they just had a, they had their advisory vote to, in favor of retail sales over there. So every community is gonna be, um, have a different, um, thought on how it's gonna be, and there'll be sales within Alaska. Just right now, I'm not, um, in support of doing the retail sales in, um, Ketchikan. How the council's gonna come out on this, I do not know, but that's what we're going to do and decide, and that's what I want us to decide in March. So KJ has a direction of where we're going, and he knows where, way we're going. That's why we, I pushed this and brought this up. We have to make a decision on where we want to start going, and we gotta make that decision so we can go somewhere. And that's either down a road of prohibiting, or a road down to making this, um, retail establishment's happening in Ketchikan. So the, the first decision is, you know, that, what are we gonna do? Yes or no? And so I'm gonna keep pushing that all the way to, uh, March here, to make a decision on what direction we're going. Anybody else? Dick and then Bob.
Yeah, um, I know that everybody knows that I've been, well, not for the retail sale in the community. And I appreciate all the people that come out here and spoke, because that's, I mean, they've got their position, and, and others have their position. But I, I think that a lot of folks need to take a look at some of the data that's been put out by Colorado. The last report that we got about two weeks ago, or three, maybe it's a month ago, clearly is not, does not support some of the statements made at the podium, I like. Reduced crime, uh, driving under the influence, kids using it, it's all up in Colorado. It's just flat up, and they've got the documentation for it. So we have to take all that into account to see where we're going. The other one, Colorado's a big state, they're gonna draw a hundred, some odd million dollars. Uh, this is a small town, and if I recall correctly, we're not anticipating the sales tax from this thing of over thirty thousand, thirty-six thousand dollars. It's just, it doesn't make a lot of sense. So we do try to take it all into account as we, as we, as we make decisions. And, uh, I'm, I'm still for where we're going. We need, we need to do, pass this ordinance, and then we'll see what we do in July or August. And I would say one thing, KJ, I'm sorry you feel we haven't done anything, but I think we've been working pretty hard in one direction, and it's not the direction you want to go, and that's just the way it goes. We're gonna disagree on it, but we've been working hard at it. Disagree.
Bob?
It's been a year.
Um, first of all, uh, KJ had, have tried on many occasions to bring this to some type of, uh, level of discussion at the council. Our job is by far less than what the borough is. The borough is in charge of zoning ordinances and codes. And they've progressed, uh, very well. They've, they've had a staff person that has done just an absolutely excellent job in dealing with the state regulations and, and working on putting those into rural regulations. He's been very informative to the committee. The committee has, has heard a lot of public input. They've looked at the changes in the laws as they've happened, they've looked at, uh, and we've heard from the director of, uh, the ABC Board. There was just a lot of information that was gathered there. So in the committee, the committee, I think, was set just as an advisory board, um, and to gather information, which they have done. I think that, uh, the advice to the borough, um, the borough is moving forward to it. Within the city of Ketchikan, our options are to mirror some of their regulations in regards to license reviews. Uh, again, the zoning will be that of the cities. The city of Ketchikan can, if they choose to, propose other restrictions, um, as long as they don't, um, uh, go against, basically, what the, uh, they can't do anything less than what the state's doing. Uh, but we can, we can implement other things in the way of signage or placement, or whatever else we want to do. Um, so our job, our task as, as the city council has been, is probably somewhat less than what the borough is doing because of the, the zoning issues. And, and as Lou has said, one of the, uh, and, and I, KJ has said it in, in the meeting a number of times, make a decision, go this way or go that way, make a decision. He understands that marijuana is legal, and the individuals can do what they, they, they do in-house with it. It's just that we're talking right now about the retail sale. So I, I just want to say that the committee hasn't worked, and the borough's been working hard, and to KJ's credit, he's brought to the table here a number of times. Thank you.
Kelly?
I think one of my biggest problems with the whole thing is that, again, the medical marijuana, and I completely, I can see it from both ends. The medical marijuana is not accessible through pharmaceuticals, and talking to people outside, and I, a lot of people come to me about that. And, and unfortunately, I can't seem to get anyone to come in the door that does use medical marijuana patches in pillow form. And what, one of my concerns is whether or not that's going to be, and what I feel, and a lot of them feel, is that that part has been shut down to the rug. Um, that they're not going to be able to get that regardless. And I guess that would, you know, that's one of my, um, my concerns. And yeah, um, you know, it may seem like, you know, but I'm gonna take it from a personal, um, uh, gut. I, I know what marijuana's done to my family, and know what it's done to my youngest sister. And unfortunately, it can get to your gut, and she'll never be the same person. And it is really hard to sit up here and hear, um, being torn apart because of your opinion, from your experience. I'm forty-nine years old. I've seen people who've had their lives ripped apart. And I'm, I'm a firm believer that, yes, alcohol is a bad thing, too. It, I work with people every day on that. I work with people with addiction problems, work with people in the court system. But we need to value everybody's opinion and everybody's experience on this subject. And I, for one, um, talk to youth who do not want to see it, or are afraid to go. They're like, now my parents are gonna be doing this. I also understand that there's very limited space within the city that we will even be able to do anything with. And so for me, it's like, where do we go, you know, that, that's a given. I understand everybody's concerns. I understand, I have friends that use, and it doesn't seem to ever affect their lives. I get that, too. I listen to everybody equally. I just expect the same respect, um, regarding how I feel about it. And no, I'm not trying to, um, um, put my opinion out there. And this is a very hard subject to wrap myself around, because I sit up at night and think about, how is this gonna affect my community, the place I grew up? I know how alcohol has affected our community. I know how, um, drugs have affected our communities. And I think, man, you know, either way, if I'm wrong, it's gonna be on me. And, and so for me, it, you know, there's just that much more, and it's just, I mean, I get it. I understand that people voted for it, but it scares me. And at the same time, I, I would like people to really read what we have optional wise, what the map the borough has given us that we've had to go through, and the amount of information that we've looked at. Check that out, because the map pretty much wipes us off the map.
Anybody else before we call? Judy?
Um, well, I don't think it's gonna surprise anybody how the vote's gonna turn out tonight. But, you know, when this whole thing first started, um, I was against it completely. And then I started thinking that, well, I, uh, like Lou, I wasn't fond of edibles at all. I was really worried about that. But I also know that it was already in our community. So my thought originally, a, a person by far wiser than myself said, well, maybe the city should run the dispensary. And I thought, hmm, I had read some stuff on that and thought, well, we could control what would be in the store then. And of course, then my business friends told me how much they didn't like that. I just think that this whole subject has really, um, it's torn our community apart in, in some ways. I would have liked to have seen this go a whole, uh, different way. For example, look at how many licenses we would allow. I mean, I don't, even if we approve this, I don't want to see a pot shop on, you know, every corner. I mean, to me, that, that's not the flavor I want for the community. I was certainly, wouldn't want to see it downtown. I just wouldn't. But I still think that we should allow it. I don't think the sky is gonna fall. I mean, I think we should allow commercials- I mean, I think we should allow commercial sales in the city. I think we need to do it responsibly. I agree with some of the stuff that people have said. I, I've sort of changed my view on edibles only because I've seen the packaging. And you know, Spencer came up here with his butter a few weeks ago. I don't know what the, well, I mean, I don't know what the hell's in that. But I, I'm sorry, I know what's in the package of brownies that you buy at the store. It clearly tells me what's in there. I don't know what people are going to be making at home. And to me, I think it's safer in many ways to have a retail store because, because of the packaging. Because you then know what's in it. Whereas now, God only knows what people are putting in it. Who knows what chemicals they're using to grow this stuff? But I also, and, and getting to Janalee's point, I mean, her and I disagree on this, but I respect her opinion. And I think that, that's something that kind of gets lost in all this sometimes is people get emotional and, um, yeah, they put themselves out there and I, and I don't think that's a fair way to do things as council members. And so on that, I'm done. Let's vote. And I'm voting against y'all and you know it.
All right. Let's call the roll then.
Does it say motion there?
Yes.
Kus?
Yes.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
No ma'am.
Kifer?
Ooh. Fun. No.
And Mayor Williams?
Yes. Passes four to three, brings us down to seven eight four, two thousand fifteen, two thousand eighteen, collective bargaining between the city of Ketchikan and the Public Safety Employees Association. Do we have a motion, please? I apologize. I was going to put this on the, um,
Can we have a, a short break? I think we have some students here that need to get signed up.
Oh, all right. Let's take five minute break. Um, seven eight four, the collective bargaining agreement with the Police, um, Safety Employees Association. Okay?
Siri's talking.
Do we have a motion?
Your Honor,
Go ahead.
I move the city council to approve the two fifteen, two eighteen collective bargaining agreement between the city of Ketchikan and Public Safety Employees Association, TSEA, and Director City Manager dispute agreement on behalf of the city council.
I move in second. Anybody want to say anything? Call the roll.
Uh, Zingy?
Yes.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Gage?
Yeah.
Kus?
No.
Okay, that passes five to one. That brings us down to seven B one. Declaration of public, uh, public emergency for the installation of a pitch roof over Electric Division Headquarters Eden Builders. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Pursuant to section three point one, two point zero five zero A seven, the Ketchikan Municipal Code, I move the city council to declare the installation of a pitch roof over the Electrical Division Headquarters Building as a public emergency authorized in the general manager entering into a contract with Eden Builders for installation of a pitch roof at a cost not to exceed sixty-two thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars, established at ten percent contingent in amount of six thousand two hundred and eighty-nine, bringing the total project cost to sixty-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-nine and approve the funding from the Electrical Division, two sixteen Electrical Division Headquarters Exterior Capital Account.
Move in second. Anybody have anything?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Dave.
I have a question for Carl or for Andy. Uh, there was such a wide range between the two bids. You feel confident that, uh, everything's there that needs to be there? I always ask that once.
Yeah, thank you. Andy Gennato, Electric Division Manager. Uh, I agree. There's quite a disparity, disparity between the two. But, uh, we've gone carefully with Eden Builders through the scope. It's a pretty simple scope. Uh, and we have some prints that we followed. It's nothing really extensive. We're going to put some trusses on top and we're going to put some plywood down. We're going to put some, uh, three tabs. And, uh, and hopefully pitch the water, right? Because we're tired of chasing leasing that aren't building. So, uh,
Flat roofs.
So I'm thinking that we can do good with the sixty-two thousand dollars.
Nick?
Yeah, Andy, um, I think we may have had a little bit of a discussion about this whole project budget. And there's, I don't know, a couple of grand that we're going to work on the building and the rest and so forth and the size. The whole complex up there, and we talked, you talked about replacing the trailer. How does this all fit in? Is this a temporary roof or is this going to? I'm trying to get in my mind how this fits in with the whole maintenance of the whole place. Is it, like I say, is it temporary? Is it going to come off in a year or something like that? What's happening?
Yeah, no, but, but first off, uh, I would encourage you to come visit us and we can show you that the, the, the building as a whole. So the building exists in several parts. It's, uh, not necessarily the, uh, the, the garage portion where we do the automotive, uh, support. Uh, that has a metal roof on it that's pitched. Now that has holes also. That's another, that's another, uh, uh, project. Uh, so this is just over the offices area that has the flat roof.
And it's about, looks like there's about three little trailers. I've been in there, but I can't remember how you wandered through the maze. It seemed like there's two or three of them kind of cluttered together.
Right. So this was, this will be the improvement to that. That will last a long time.
Okay.
Uh, and, and then also different than, we have a mobile office where we had two other offices. So that facility is also rotten to the point now where we can't support it anymore. Uh, and we're, uh, we're, we're collecting, uh, bids right now on another mobile office identical.
So that mobile office is on wheel?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. I think, okay, now I, that kind of makes it more visible.
Okay. And then just to give you some order of magnitude, these things aren't very costly. Right. So these mobile offices are in a realm, if you buy used ones, they're around fifteen, fifteen K. If you want to buy a new one built to your spec, they're about thirty K. So they're on that, uh, they're on that order. So they're not significantly costly. We'd like to get one almost identical and that way it will go in exactly the same place. And the reason being is because we have plumbing in that one. There's a, there's a restroom and then all the plumbing will line up. Uh, and we would actually salvage the, the plumbing fixtures and, um, and then place the other, the, the newer one on top of that and, and replace the plumbing fixtures from what we salvaged in the old.
So the mobile office never moved?
It, no. Correct.
Okay. You're going to have me asking you a whole bunch more questions. Let's just get the roof fixed and then we'll talk about it.
Yeah, it's mo, it's mobile office, but we're looking at some term that is going to be there.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, call the roll, please.
Kifer?
Yes.
Gage?
Uh, yes.
Kus?
Yes.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
That passes six to nothing. That brings us down to seven B two exempted procurement of programming content, KPU, IPTV series services from competitive bidding, Tegna Media. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, isn't there an executive session?
Your Honor?
Um, we can get the motion. I want to talk about it before we decide to go in there or not.
Okay.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Pursuant to section three point one, two point zero five zero A two, the Ketchikan Municipal Code, I move city council exempted procurement of the two sixteen KPU IPTV programming content from competitive bid requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code authorizing the general manager to purchase program content from Tegna, uh, Media and approve funding from the two sixteen Telecommunication Division Broadcast Content Fee Account Number six three zero dash zero four.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Move in second. Now, did we have some questions on this and? Anybody?
Well, Lou, I think I've got one question. All we're told here from what I can see, let me look here and make sure, is that it's over fifty grand. That doesn't tell me nothing, unless I missed something.
I do not know what they negotiated and I don't know if that's, um, do we want to talk an executive session or?
That's why we requested the executive session.
Well, I don't know if we want to go there or not. Uh, my other question was, um, there was, um, brought up to me with some concerns. I guess our competition is dropping this. Is that what I heard? GCI?
I think the, head, head pushing.
Yeah.
I think the answer is yes, no, and maybe, but, but not necessarily.
That covers it.
This is not related to, I'll say differently. GCI recently dropped AMC Network, which has Walking Dead and several other very popular network shows. That is not what this agenda item is about.
Okay.
This agenda item is about our renewal of a contract that enables us to carry NBC, which is basically King out of Seattle, and also Network Northwest, or Cable Network News, which is a, both are very, very popular channels. In the world of big networks, CBS, NBC, ABC, only CBS brings its, its feed to Ketchikan. Ostensibly, you could put up an aerial on your house and pick up CBS. But NBC, so we pick up the CBS feed locally and we, that's the CBS Anchorage affiliate. So if you tune to our CBS signal on your KPU TV, you'll be watching the Anchorage news. Contrast, NBC and ABC have never delivered their signals to Ketchikan. They just don't exist here. Which means KPU has to go out into the world and find it somewhere. In order to get the NBC or ABC signals out of Anchorage, we would have to lease very expensive transport or circuits up to Anchorage to pick those up. Contrast, we own our own network going down to Seattle. So we can pick up, caked in this case, uh, in Seattle and bring it up on our fiber and or our radio and re-broadcast it. So the transport is taken care of, but we still have to contract with the network to, to, to have the ability or the right to rebroadcast a transmission. With that introduction, most of our TV content channels, we get directly through NCTC, which is the big co-op that GCI also uses to buy the right to rebroadcast transmissions. But in the case of NBC and Northwest Cable News, they don't participate with NCTC. So we have to go to them directly and contract with them. Prior to right now, the rate we have paid, uh, this company, the umbrella company that has NBC and, uh, and Northwest Cable News out of Seattle, has been below in the aggregate fifty thousand dollars a year. So we haven't had to come to council with that contract. But they recently raised their rate. In fact, they doubled their rate. The doubling of that rate, and I don't need to be an executive session to share this with you, is such that we previously paid them about twenty-four thousand a year. This year, we'll pay them, going forward, two thousand sixteen, to carry both channels, we'll pay them roughly forty-six thousand. And the year after that, we'll pay them right in the neighborhood of fifty thousand. And the reason I'm being approximate is because it's based on the number of customers we have. So we're charged by month per sub, per subscribing. So the choice we have is, and I should say, they were adamant that they don't want their contract in the public record. Because they sell their content to Spokane, they sell it to Tacoma, and it's, it's proprietary. That's why the executive session. Um, because we can't discuss the actual rate in, or share their contract. The choice that's left to us is not a very good choice because we can't afford circuits to Anchorage. And our customers really, really like the Seattle, uh, based news and they really, really like Northwest Cable News. And we really, really can afford to not be carrying NBC because of the very popular Sunday Night Football or whatever it is that people like on NBC. So our choice is sign this or be without competitively. We don't want to do without. But it's just one more item that goes in the hopper relative to our calculation of how much we need to charge for TV. Having said all that, whether it's this one or AMC, which we'll be raising this raise in the year, we, we have many contracts that expire throughout the year. And we're always visiting contracts on TV networks that we think, well, let's not carry that anymore. We recently dropped CB, excuse me, CBS College Sports. We were paying sixty-nine cents a sub per month for that. We have three other networks we're looking at right now that we think we're going to drop. So cumul, uh, together with CBS Sports, that'll drop, we're paying every month about about fifty a month per sub. So some go up, some we get rid of. We're trying to maintain the equilibrium so that we don't have rate shock for our customers. If all that makes sense.
Yes. Dick?
So ballpark figure, you're saying that this contract isn't going, it isn't significantly over fifty grand?
Over, in one year it's not, but it's a two-year contract. I'm sorry, I apologize for the feeling to mention.
Okay, okay. If that gives me a ballpark, whereas right now, it could have been another one or two hundred thousand dollars. Okay.
Hey, and one last question then. Is that AMC thing going to be coming to us? Is that something that's coming?
It's under review.
Okay, thank you.
We are presently broadcasting it as we speak.
Can we get the sprout?
Sprout?
My grandson loves a sprout.
Then consider it done.
I don't know what they cost, but just throw it out there.
Why we're on that subject?
Hey, let's call the roll, please.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Kus?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Gage?
Yeah.
Okay, that passes six, uh, five to nothing. That brings us down to seven, three ordinance. I scribbled on it. I'm amending chapter eleven, twelve, Telecommunication Services Rates, first reading.
Sixteen eighteen oh four.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Anybody?
Keep losing my screen.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Bob.
I move the city council to approve first reading ordinance number sixteen eighteen oh four, amending the chapter eleven point one two, Telecommunication Service Rate for the Ketchikan Municipal Code providing for public carrying and establishment effective date.
Second.
Move in second. Yeah, Carl, I think I have, how is this going to affect me as residential plus R one? Am I going to be bumped up to that or?
Pushing over there again deferred you.
I mean that for everybody, not just me.
No, it's just you.
It's just you.
Unfortunately, same answer. Um, it, it depends. We'll be sending out a card that says, uh, you can opt to have your rate go up based upon us giving you a few additional services, or you can say no, in which case we won't pass the higher rate on to you.
So if I get rid of, um, call waiting or, um?
If you don't take those new features that we say we're going to put on your bill, then you will not
Okay.
have your rate go up.
Okay. Thank you very much. You're quite welcome. Dick?
When I first looked at this, I said, yeah, but then I noticed that on my bill, I was paying six fifty already for call priority on top of my ten forty. So it balances out. And actually, you probably get a little bit more for what I think you're doing with that, that one that's sixteen, whatever it is, three forty-five. So you're probably ahead unless you don't want any of them. But my question is, is what, on this page here, it talks about premium, something apparently you can add to it, premium choice residential, no, premium choice residential plus and total choice residential plus. What do you get for those things? It's, uh, it's on the first page of it, I think, or second page. The residential plus line is sixteen forty-five. And then right down below that would be the second page, it starts describing something.
Can I have one thing too? What's the teen service?
What is that time?
You know, I, I, I'll tell you what I, I think teen service is. It's been a long time since I had any teens, in my opinion, but, um, and I couldn't begin to tell you how many customers we haven't had the service, but let's pretend your home phone number for your family was two two five two thousand. And you had a teenager in the house that wanted to have their own number and would give them two two five two thousand ten. But they wouldn't necessarily get a directory listing. So it was a lower rate to encourage people to have more than one. I don't think I gave you your answer.
No, you didn't.
No, no, I, I just don't know if, if you've got a residential, what you call residential plus R one, which is everything, and a residential basic, which is an R two, which is nothing except the phone. And then you go down below and another thing and it's, and it's got two new features, premium choice residential plus at three fifty and total choice residential plus at sixty.
It's on page one of the ordinance, section one, page one. It's on page one of the ordinance, section one, page one.
Thank you. Okay, so, um,
Very bold.
Yeah, yeah, I see it. So in, in short, I just want, want to read this term plate so I respond correctly. If you elect to take Total Choice Residential Plus, you will receive services that you don't have today, which are select call accept, select call forward, select call reject. And that'll effectively result in your, the rate you pay today being increased. From sixteen forty-five a month to approximately twenty-one dollars a month. If you, if you don't elect to take those services, your rate, your basic rate will stay at sixteen forty-five. That's, that's the essence of it.
The sixteen forty-five rate, already somewhere in there says that includes all of those things.
It, it doesn't include these three additional services that we intend to put, add onto it.
And what are those?
Select call accept, select call forward, and select call reject is my understanding of what we're, we're doing here.
Select, okay.
All right, call the roll.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kus?
Yeah.
Kifer?
Yeah.
Severson?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Okay, that passes five to nothing, that brings us to vouchers. Um, Ketchikan Daily News, twenty-eight hundred seventy-one point seven seven.
Your Honor, I'm moved for the approval of vouchers to the Ketchikan Daily News in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Move in second, call the roll.
Gage?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Kus?
Yeah.
Severson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Okay, that passed, that brings us down to managers report, Carl.
To Mr. Mayor, Mark, would you come up to the podium? Mr. Mayor, at our December seventeen meeting, I'd like everybody to know that Mr. Corpron would no longer be Acting Public Works Director at this meeting. I'd like to introduce Mark Hilson, our new Public Works Director. Mark started, uh, New Year's Eve, uh, Day. He's getting up to speed. We had about a two-hour meeting yesterday and went over a whole bunch of different projects that, uh, he needs to get up to speed on and that we'll be doing this year. Just wanted to introduce you to him and welcome him to bench camp. Welcome.
Thank you. Hope you say that in a couple of months.
You may have noticed-
I hope so too.
You may have noticed it hasn't rained much since you got here, but we, we lie about the rains. It's, it's like this all summer, all your life.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
All right. Carl?
Mr. Mayor, uh, under managers report, uh, I submitted a memorandum for Mr. Corpron regarding, uh, two thousand sixteen cruise ship schedule and berth assignments.
Which I wanted to talk about.
I'll defer to you, Mr. Mayor.
Um, I'd like us to put this on, um, the next managers report. I don't, what we have is, um, the berth one area has a concern about some docking and, and they've talked to probably some of you guys and talked to me. And what I've done is organized to have, um, a couple of them that are interested to go down and meet with Rick. So he can show them how they position those boats and why and what and how. And they're willing to, um, they would love to go down there and, um, talk about it and see how it's done. So we don't sit here and ca- um, think that, um, it's done some way that, um, it benefits one dock better than the other or whatever you want to say. So instead, um, if you guys have no objection, Carl's asking for this to be, if nobody has objection, they're gonna move ahead with this. I just say, let's, if we could just wait two weeks, have those guys, um, meet with Rick. Um, I was down there with Rick and he explained, um, how things work and what they work, and these guys can ask their questions. So, um, I'd like them to be a part of the, um, be able to, um, ask their questions, be a part of the process, see how it works. Uh, more information, the better, instead of people just concerned that somebody is doing something to them or somebody else. Dick?
Is, um, somebody like Steve gonna be down there with Rick?
Steve can be there, Rick can be there, everybody.
I think everybody from those should be here to listen to the game.
Oh, yeah. It's not a secret meeting.
Cause I, it-
Understood. I understand. That's all I ask, is there any objection to that?
No, I just have a question.
You bet, Dave.
On, on the same item, I was trying to read through the report that you guys had put in there. I didn't see if there were, I, I, I didn't see an answer to the, the issue that the gentleman raised at the beginning of the meeting before the marijuana, about, about the crane. I, I saw that you're not going to change things, does that mean the crane's gonna stay there or is the crane going away or?
The crane would stay.
Okay.
All right, anything else on the managers' report? See it then, city clerk's file?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City attorney's file? Get your agenda items? Mayor Council comments? Dave?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Bob?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Janalee?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Judy?
Nothing.
Dick?
Welcome to two thousand sixteen.
All right, the only thing I have to say is-
Different year, same stuff.
Uh, we do have, you know, we'll bring up this ordinance again on the marijuana and then in March, you know, after the state has done their thing, we will be talking about it some more. But this is gonna be the big, uh, you know, a big issue for the new year and, um, we're talking about it. We're not sitting here doing nothing. We are trying to make a decision and I'm proud of the council. It's a tough, um, decisions and there's a lot of, um, feelings involved from all sides and, um, that's what we're here for. That's the process. It may not be pretty, it may not be real fast, but it is the process we've been elected to do and, um, and everybody's involved in. And that's the people that want to come here and speak to us, the people that stop us on the streets. But then it comes down to the final vote, which, um, I have all the confidence in the world, um, you guys will make a decision. So, that brings us down to executive session. Uh, we have only one, um, left, so, um, B one, request for exec se- executive session collective bargaining between the City of Ketchikan KPU and International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor, I move that City Council to declare a consistent with the general manager's memorandum dated December twenty-four, two fifteen, is in the best interest of the city to discuss negotiations regarding a collective bargain agreement between the City of Ketchikan DVA, Ketchikan Public Utilities, and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local fifteen forty-seven. In existing exceptions, according to that finding that the City Council go into executive session in accordance with KMC two point zero four point zero two five A one and B two and AS four four point six two point three one zero C one and three, and discuss negotiation of the three items described in the general manager's memorandum dated December twenty-four, two fifteen, which matters include the need to discuss subjects acknowledged of which would have an adverse impact upon the finances of the city and upon the city's ability to negotiate favorable labor settlements.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Move in second, and call the roll.
Kus?
Yeah.
Severson?
Yeah.
Gage?
Yeah.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
All right, let's adjourn in the executive session. Order, we met executive session, we gave management direction, at this time we have no further, um, business. Do we have a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Thank you, everybody. I'm gonna leave you these things, Katie.